Okay, it is four thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. Public information, copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Reisig does have an excused.
And Blue?
Here.
Excellent. Okay, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, on the agenda, first of all, Lisa will not be here this evening. She had an emergency. And we have, we have, if you like, we have two executive sessions. Troy, are you going to be handling one of them?
I saw the sheriff, yes.
Okay, do we need Lisa here for that?
I don't think we do, no.
Okay, where are we going to meet? Do we have some work that can let us into that?
We can use our conference room.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
And we can figure out too, if you need us.
Okay. And the first one, would have liked to have had Lisa here. What's your plan? It is a personnel issue. Do you want to continue with it, Mark? What would you like to do?
Well, I think if Gene's here and Mark is here, I think we probably should.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so we'll continue with the, with the two executive sessions at the end then. Okay.
And so the second one, the sheriff union contract, it'll be you and Troy?
Yes.
Okay.
And he said the sheriff.
And the sheriff also. Okay. But we'll, we'll, we'll address that when we get to that. I just wanted to see whether we need to remove him or not. But we're, we're okay. Okay. With that, is there any other changes or modifications to the agenda?
I don't have anything. I'd just like to know if I've got Sarah and Ruth on the call, if I answered properly.
Okay, I just, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there, is there a second? Any other discussion? If not, record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have four yeses?
Thank you very much. I want to remind everybody that we do have the, reserve the right to enter to a closed session, other than the two that we have here at the bottom, anytime we feel that it's necessary. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have four yeses?
Thank you. Motion to move into Board of Equalization.
I move that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close. The only item under Board of Equalization is?
You have four yeses?
Yes. Only item is to receive the taxless corrections. Motion to receive the taxless corrections?
I move that we receive the taxless corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close. Motion to come out of, I'm sorry.
Sorry, four yeses?
Motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
I move that we come out of the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second? A second. Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Moving into general, I'm sorry.
I have four yeses.
Moving into general agenda items, discuss, consider, designated vendor for the printing of the postcards for the joint public hearing. Kelly?
So, just like last year, it's the pink postcards, and NICO is recommending that you select the state print shop, so they can get us pricing in bulk, like with other counties, yeah.
Like we did last year. Okay. Do we have a motion to that?
I would move to go with the clerk's suggestion of using the state print shop.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have four yeses?
Thank you. Next item, discuss and consider approval of the GeoPliant license and service agreement. Tim?
That was hard to type. I apologize. I didn't.
It looked like plant.
I didn't name it. Good afternoon, gentlemen. We are looking at a way of processing and collecting damage assessment data. We have already met with two companies, and we are more interested in going with GeoPliant, also known as Crisis Track. Crisis Track is integrated with our Web VOC that we already use as the state's system for virtual emergency operations center. So, we're already using that program. This program is, is owned by the same company, or at least it has a working relationship with that company. And it also integrates with ArcGIS, which is another program that our, our own mapping department here uses. What we like about Crisis Track is that it will take our data from our assessor's office and enter it into this system, and then when we go out and do damage assessments, we can, we can get a running total of our, our estimated costs for damage assessment. We were already talking to this group before the storms of, of late, the tornado and the hailstorms, and now we see how it can be used. After the hailstorm, we sent the SERC team out with clipboards and forms. Mike, you were one of those. It wasn't, it's not the handiest thing in the world, is it?
No.
So, all of that data that they brought back had to be manually entered into a computer, and this program automates that. They take out tablets or smartphones with this app on it. It will, as they go through, they'll answer questions about, is the property affected, minor, moderate, major, or destroyed. And then it will take that, and it will, it will give, it will assign a cost to that. So, if it was, if the home appraised for a hundred thousand dollars, and they say it's moderately damaged, then it's going to say, well, it's fifty percent damaged, so your damage was fifty thousand dollars. All of that will upload into the cloud. It'll come back here to, to a computer. It will, there's also a public-facing web portal where people can self, self-identify, you know, damage of their own property. They can take pictures. It geo-locates all the pictures, so you go to an address point, you take a picture of the front of the house, it's automatically, you don't have to go in there and name it, you know, so-and-so address. It's already going to name that. It's going to attach that with that address point. The, the cost is twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy dollars annually for three years. It's a total contract cost of sixty-eight-hundred dollars. The quote from the other, other business called Orion, the first year alone was going to be sixty-two-hundred dollars, and then forty-five-hundred dollars for each consecutive year after that, for a contract total of fifteen-thousand-two-hundred. Region 22 plans to pay for that, for the Crisis Track, the sixty-eight-hundred, out of our special equipment fund, which is the fund that when we take Mobile Command out to these wildfires, and we get reimbursed by the state, that money goes into there. So, it's coming out of the Governor's Emergency Fund. So, basically, we're, we're using the Governor's Emergency Fund money that we've already been paid to, to pay for three years of this program.
How much do you have in that account already, Tim?
As of right now, there's eleven thousand. We've spent quite a bit of money coming, coming in, going. I think it has brought in as much as forty-nine thousand. We've spent about thirty-eight thousand of that, mostly working on repairs and, and upgrades to Mobile Command. So, we've, we've got to the point where there's not a whole lot more we can spend on Mobile Command. I do like to keep a reserve, because some of these fires, you know, they, we don't have anybody to go, you know, feed people, so we have to send, send somebody to the grocery store, basically. And, you know, they like to be paid then, then. So, that's where we, where we pull that money from. So, I like to keep a cushion, but I think we can, we can survive taking, taking the sixty-eight-hundred out, because fire season isn't starting that good yet this year. Hopefully, it doesn't. But that's where we stand on that.
This isn't a allowable expense for that type of, for that fund?
Yes.
What are we currently using for, for this?
Pencil and paper.
Yeah.
And Excel spreadsheets.
So, it needs to be manually downloaded and all this stuff?
Right. This is, you know, I've debated on this, because we haven't had a storm in quite some time where we needed damage assessment, and then this year happened. I'm like, eh, maybe we need to look into this again. And then, just days ago, we've, we've got, you know, hundreds and thousands of dollars in damage, just to, you know, just to, one house was a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. This will, it'll automatically populate our FEMA forms, so all of the data that we put in there, even the, the teams that we send out, they'll, it will populate how, how long they worked, what neighborhoods they worked in. It will basically give all the FEMA forms where, when FEMA comes and says, well, where is this? Well, here's the form. It's not, well, give me a few days to fill that form out, because we didn't fill it out before.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll deal with this, and then when we get down to Board and Staff Reports, I want to talk to you a little bit about the storm and other damages. Okay, we'll get through this one first, Tim. What's, I'm sorry.
I just have more questions about, does this have, can you use this for road washouts and, and everything that, this, this isn't just for residential homes out there? This is, this is for?
It's public and private property, so we can, we can actually train road and bridge on, on how to, how to use the program, and they can put it on their own tablets. And as they're going out to, to assess their own washouts and damage, and culverts and such, they can, they can do the exact same thing.
Would that would have counted on the bridges that we lost on the fire?
Well, we still didn't lose enough public property to, to reach the threshold. We still got to reach a threshold. And for, for Scotts Bluff County, it's, it's kind of high, just because we're the most populated county in the Panhandle, so.
Okay.
I don't know what the threshold is right now, but at three or four years ago, it was like one-point-seven million that we had to reach in public damage in order to qualify for a, for a public assistance. Public being owned by the public, not private property. It's confusing. Individual assistance means homes and businesses. Public property means the stuff that we own as, as governments.
Okay.
But this still helps you establish how much you have?
Right.
To figure out if you hit the one-point-seven or where you're at.
Exactly. It will, it will help us find that faster. They, you know, anytime we have a disaster, they, the state is on us, you know, what's, what's your damage totals? You know, we need a, we need a damage assessment where, where they can then kick it up to FEMA and see about getting a presidential declaration. This will help us get there, because all the, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed with, with that program auto-filling the large majority of our forms.
And the thing is, in a situation like that, it's time-sensitive. And that kind of program will save us a ton of time, because you, you have a, a deadline to meet for funding, and it, and it's pretty short. And so, if you have people out doing damage assessment with the system, you can quickly, within hours, get a total to send it to the state. In the old days, by hand, it took hours and hours and hours.
Days and days, actually. And, and this program will, not only can we send our teams out with that, but people can self, you know, self-identify their own damage, and then we can go out and verify it. And so, we're going, instead of canvassing neighborhoods, we're going point-to-point. And if there's a house, you know, the damage was way over here, and there's a house over here that reported some damage, we can go out there and figure out, you know, are, are they just shaming us, or, or did we have another storm that we didn't even know about? You know, we're concentrated, we're looking at this, and, you know, here was this little spin-up way over here, and we didn't even realize it. So, that's a way for, for the public to be able to, to let us know that, that they've had some damage.
So, would your field people then be taking like an iPad or something with them to do all that?
Right. So, we have five iPads in our office, and then this program can be downloaded. There's unlimited amount of users, according to the contract. So, if we sent the SERC team out and said, hey, we've only got five iPads, but you've got twenty-five people.
If they had the role.
Have them download it, put in the, put in the correct password, and then they're off to the races. We can actually assign teams as well. So, we can take, take the map and make, you know, squares, and say, this team goes into here, and they're going to touch every, every home in this, this block. This team's going to go over here and touch every home in this block. And so, that way, not only can we make sure that we cover everybody, but we make sure that, that those volunteer hours can go against our twenty-five percent match, because, you know, a federally declared disaster, well, it's not twenty-five percent. The state picks up part of it, but seventy-five percent is federal, and then the state picks up a portion of the twenty-five percent, and then it's, the rest of it's on us. And we can use the soft match of volunteer hours to cover part of that, part of that soft match.
Okay. What's the Board's pleasure?
Well, I move that we approve, Tim, to get this system for damage assessment, the GeoPliant.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the license and the service agreement. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question. So, Mike, I mean, obviously, you made the motion, you would be in, I mean, you're kind of firsthand involved with some of this. You certainly would be recommending it.
Yes. Because I've, I've done this before.
Did you second it, Mark? I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion. And a second. Is there any other questions or concerns? Yeah, the discussion on it?
Is it, yeah, just, is this coming out of, this is the Region 22 budget, so all the, all the entities that fund this?
Right. Well, the, the money that I'm planning on using this time for the first three years will be out of the Special Products Fund. After that, I'm going to work it into my budget, and go into, and go into everybody proportionally.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing none. Record your votes.
Who, who signs this? Will you take this to? Okay to close?
Close, please.
And you have four yeses?
Thank you. It's over here somewhere.
Well, signature printed to you.
I'll sign it, and you print it. How's that?
You don't, I don't know if you want me to print it.
I, I get it. I see what you're having.
Kelly, Kelly does that. Okay, we'll move on to old business. There is none. We'll move down to, to public comments. Is there anybody in the, here that would like to speak to the Board at this time? If not, move on to Board and Staff Reports. We'll start with the Board. Anybody have any comments? Mike, anything?
Nope.
The, I like to review next meeting dates and make sure that we're all on the same page. Obviously, we're starting on the eighteenth with, July eighteenth with protests, right?
Correct.
We could talk about that in a minute. But our regular Commissioner meetings then would be, obviously, the seventeenth, the day before that.
Correct.
And then in August would be the normal dates of the seventh and the twenty-first.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then, I know Kelly had sent an email asking about ideas about the, the logistics of things during protest time, meals and those kinds of things. My, I mean, I'm hearing that we could have as many as five hundred protests, and if that's the case, I'm assuming we're going to have lunch here, and, and if we're going, the last I heard, we're probably going nine in the morning till nine o'clock at night.
I, I, it's looking that way, and possibly the weekend.
And so, if so, we're probably talking then about eating a supper-type meal here, dinner-type meal.
Lunch and dinner here.
Right. The, the one thing I would like to add to that, it, it's not just because we have to eat.
No.
We need a break.
Yes.
I mean, if we're, if, if we start at nine o'clock, and we go to nine o'clock at night, there is a, and, and you need the break. Everybody here needs a, a chance just to go somewhere else, sit, and, and, and take a breather. It gets.
Even if it's just over there, okay.
Even if it's just over here on the other side, we, we do need a break.
Yes.
And if we're going for five days, six days, whatever the case might be, we, we need some time. And, and, so that's, so just so everybody understands that we're just not here to eat. It's, it's, we need, we need a break. We need a break, for sure.
Well, we don't want you, what do they call it, hangry for property owners either, so.
Yeah.
If we were only going to seven in the evening, I'd say we can eat at home.
That's absolutely, yeah.
But if we're going till nine, then we probably shouldn't do that.
And we can, we can deal with those almost on a daily basis, whatever, whatever comes up and, and whatever. Mike, you're going to get broke in. You're going to get broke in the right way.
Like the good old days.
Last year, I think we went three days, and it was all done. You're gonna, you're gonna get thrown right in the middle of it all.
Oh, yeah. I've been in worse situations, so.
Okay, well, I'll ask you that when it's all over. How's that? Okay, we'll see how things go. Okay, Charlie, do you have anything? Okay, move down to Staff. I'd like to start with Tim. Now, we know that we, we did lose the house out here east of town. Was there any other property? I, I didn't hear of anything, but maybe, do you know of any other property damage?
Well, there were some, there's a tree down on a house south of Gary. Did some minor damage. Think that was straight-line winds. I went with the Weather Service, was it the last Saturday, and when we did the, the damage assessments.
I did see, I did see out by the house. You were parked off the side of the road. I don't know who you had with you, but.
Yeah. We, we had two of the, two of the Weather Service meteorologists from Cheyenne came up, and we spent several hours. First place we went, of course, was to the house out on.
Is there any assistance for those folks at all on their damage?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
But they, the house was, it was a rental. The property owner had insurance on the house.
Okay.
I don't know that if the, if the renters had rental insurance or anything, and if they did, it was probably not enough. They had some campers. They had several vehicles.
I heard there were some animals, and they were all right?
Yeah.
There wasn't any injuries?
They lost two of their chicks. They had some chickens, and I think a few of their chicks got smashed.
What about any injuries? I, I hadn't heard of any injuries and?
None from that house especially. There were twelve people in the house. They were all in the basement.
Guys? Please. Thank you. Go ahead.
There, there was a, there was a fellow in a van who had pulled up and pulled into that intersection just as it was hitting. He was trying to get, you know, he saw it coming.
Did he live there, or he was just driving?
He was just driving.
Okay.
And he said, he actually pulled up while we were talking to, to the family.
Really?
When we went out there to do the, do the assessment. And he said that the van got picked up, started spinning around, and all the windows blew in on him. He had some cuts and scrapes, but.
Was that the van that was parked out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay.
Kind of a whiteish van.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, he, he was minorly injured. I don't know that anybody had any major injuries. If somebody, if somebody stuck their head out up north of town.
I didn't hear anything. I didn't see anything in the paper, or nothing else was reported, so I, I didn't know.
Yeah. And, and that's another thing we're trying to, trying to get with this program, is getting the public to know that they need to report these things to emergency management, where we, where we can look into it. But we, we, we did survey that house. We, we determined that the tornado kind of did a J-hook right on top of the house. So, it touched down on this side of the river, went across the river, basically hit that house and did a U-turn right in the backyard, and came back across and.
So, that was the same one? There wasn't a second one for that one? Okay.
There was. There were four funnels, but that one funnel did a J-hook right on top of that house, and went back across the road. The, their telephone poles to the east were leaning towards the highway. The ones at, at the west end were leaning away from the highway. And then the ones in the middle were snapped. And then some were laying on this side of the, of the poles, and some were laying on that side.
That's when they got the, got, got the pivot, laid the pivots over into the ditch.
And it laid that pivot over, in the, it laid it over once, but in the middle, it laid it over twice. It's weird.
We were lucky that we just didn't have any
Yeah.
serious injuries or loss of life over the thing. Yeah.
They, they, I believe they have seven touchdowns in Scotts Bluff County. None, none of the others did any damage, except for the potential for the one south of town that, that hurt. There was a Quonset hut that, that lost part of its roof, but that could have also been straight lines. So, they're still trying to determine that. They, they believe that that one might have been like an EF zero. The one that hit the house was the EF two, which is really strong for our area, because we don't usually get the, the strong ones like that.
We were out to College for the Theater West. They, they moved everybody into a safe area. They did a really good job. Really, really good job. We spent quite a bit of time in there. I wanted, I wanted to leave really bad, but they're asking everybody, you know, to stay, and, and then they canceled it, then they came back, and they canceled again. As soon as they canceled it, I ran to my car and got hammered at Twentieth and Avenue Y, about four blocks from my house. And so, my car got hammered pretty good, car and the house. But, but they, they really did, I mean, they had people stationed all the way around, and they really did a good job out there. I don't, I don't know who to thank out there, but they sure did a, they sure did their job.
I'll, I'll see if I can find out.
Whoever, whoever, whoever organized it was, they had some of the actors, you know, doing what need be done, but I, yeah, they need to be, they need to be thanked. They did a really, really good job. They had their, they had their, their stuff at the group out there, so.
Well, they had, they have a new safety director out there, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to him. We've been playing phone tag for the last week.
Yeah. It wasn't a lot of people, maybe forty, fifty people. I don't, I don't know how many, but they were, they had everybody in one area, and, and it was, it was very, very well done. I was, I was very impressed.
After, after we looked at the tornado damage, we went up and looked at the, at the hail damage. We went up to that apartment complex off of Forty-second. And Weather Service folks were really impressed with the, the size of hail that, that we got here. There were, there were holes in the ground, you know, baseball-sized holes in the ground where, where they had hit the ground, not to mention all the windows and.
It was just kind of buried all over. We had, I, I live out the west end of town. We had stuff from golf ball to softball size, you know, that's a.
There was some question as to why the sirens were sounded for hail, but if you look at the damage path, the, the damage done by the, by the hail was much more than the damage done by, by a tornado. So, that's why I made the decision to set the sirens off when they said two-inch hail. So, that's why I made the decision to set the sirens off when they said two-inch hail. And some people say, why'd you set tornado sirens off? Well, we've preached from day one that they're not tornado sirens, they're outdoor warnings.
What about any animals, about the cattle or anything?
I hadn't heard of any livestock or anything. I'm sure if any dogs or cats were out there, they probably got walloped pretty good, but I haven't heard of any, any livestock, any major, you know, injuries or anything, but-
That's a South Carolina term, isn't it, walloped?
Oh, I don't know. We use it in Alabama.
Well, good, thank you. You did a, did a good job, I appreciate, appreciate you being out there. Okay, thank you, Tim.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was gonna give you a call, but I knew you were busy.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else from the staff have anything to, to add?
Trying to keep brief, um, quickly, we are, we finally got NACO, or actually NERMA, legal to review, um, contract for our software. They didn't see any red flags, we're moving forward with that and it's, once we can dot the i's, cross the t's and that, I'll be, I'll be sending that out to you for your, uh, perusal and to answer any questions for our scheduling and dispatching software and then with the upgrades we'll be doing with that with some mobile apps, automated call reminders, uh, and things of that nature. Hopefully, try to have that done here in the next month to two. And then, uh, we did have the mobility management team out again, did some site visits. We're still looking for a potential location for a transit facility. Lot of steps involved with that with Title VI assessments and, uh, environmental impact studies, things like that. So, that's a slow process, we're still working on that. And then, um, starting July 11th, Kimball County is going to start a commuter service from Kimball up here. They'll be stopping at Clean Harbors, their transit terminal, the Double L Cafe at Hilltop.
Is that the one they were talking about when they were here?
Yes, and they'll have an express one that will only stop at the airport here and then, and it'll be twice a day. Then they're gonna have a regular one which will stop at the airport, the hos, the college, the hospital, Walmart and Capwin four times a day. We'll be using those as transfer points when necessary to our bus line, um, unless that's their es, their destination.
Are they gonna keep a bus here?
They don't have enough right now to do that. Their goal for keeping the buses here will be for their, um, red line, which is their DIA run. And they're starting up a Sun Line which goes between Kimball and Sydney and they'll be starting a Star Line between Kimball and Cheyenne in the next probably quarter. Clean Harbors Q3 is hiring 58 new people already. There's not 58 homes in Kimball. They're going to train those people on their current incinerator and send 58 of their current employees to, to Arkansas, I believe it is, because they have a incinerator down there that will be like the new one in Kimball and they're gonna be trained on the new type of incinerator. When they come back, then they'll be fully qualified. So, they're trying to get this up and running, uh, with a lot of Clean Harbors folks, make it affordable for them to use as more of a parking ride type. They won't curb, pick them up curb-to-curb, they'll do parking rides throughout the area.
Where, where, where are they going to park?
Probably the airport to start with and then we may, as, as it expands, we may have to look for additional spots in town here. They've got an agreement to be able to park in areas out at Hilltop by the cafe. And then, um, again, and I believe they're gonna have a parking area down by their transit facility. Uh, they're still projecting 2023 to start up the missile project and run through 2032. And then, again, you're talking, as it increases, 1,000, 1,500, possibly as many as 3,000 people out at one time out here working. They're working 10-hour days, seven days a week at various crews. They'll be rotating different contractors through each s, site, you know, electricians one time and then, you know, as they, and they'll try and coordinate all that. So, it's gonna be a huge influx of, of, uh, pretty high-paying jobs. And those folks may be off on the weekend, they may be off midweek and be coming here to do things. Um, so, Kimball's just trying to get infrastructure in place and routes in place and then work with us to support getting them to their destination once they're here. And on that, July 11th, um, I reached out to, uh, Commissioner Raisin and Blue. They're doing an open house, they've actually leased a building east of their current facility, just half a block east, um, for additional storage and additional bus barn facility because they've outgrown their facility. They'll have a ribbon cutting on that at noon on July 11th. I believe Mike is planning on attending, I've not heard back from Russ. If he's not going to go and, and anybody else wants to go down, um, that week we'll also be doing some video filming for a docu-series that, um, UNO is doing for transit statewide. Uh, there'll be an alliance on Monday for open planes here Tuesday, filming our, some of our passengers, drivers. They do some really cool drone work. Uh, and then in Kimball on Wednesday and then they'll also be filming a, a separate one Wednesday with the three transit agencies and talking about our coordination and how we're trying to work together to kinda do the first mile, last mile on some of these trips for folks and, uh, just give more people access, not just for medical, but, but to get to, you know, a social events, maybe come see family, things like that. And it's, uh, NDOT is really wanting to, to try and focus on that, I guess, or highlight that, the fact that the work we've been doing together over the last year, year and a half. So, it'll be probably a separate video series. If you are interested in watching of those, you can go to Nebraska Transit's YouTube channel or nebraskatransit.com, there's a link to those videos. They've done several from different agencies back east to kinda give you an idea of what, what this is, uh, designed to do is to highlight the importance of public transit, um, in Nebraska and throughout the country, really. But anyway, if you would be interested, you're welcome to ride with me. Otherwise, I believe Mike is going down, um, on his bike, but, um, other than that, um, we're just, you know, keep plugging along at the pace of government, trying to get some things, some checkmarks in some boxes.
Are you gonna be involved in the Catalibons Ball as far as transportation?
Not at this time, haven't been approached. Uh, it would be something we would have to, um, get approval through the state and if we do events like that, um, we can do it. The issue we run into is if we're open to do that, we have to be open for the general public to take a ride anywhere. So, it's something we could definitely look at, uh, but, uh, if we do set up to run, we have to take trips for anybody wanting to go anywhere during that time. Logistically, we might be able to do it.
I know it was a little more difficult for the, when they were in Kimball. This might be a little easier where it's gonna be in Minotair, so.
And, um, it's definitely something that we could definitely look at and talk about, um, as we get closer to that. Um, working with the City of Gearing on some things for a Safe Streets For All grant to try and, um, potentially add some safety features to some of our bus stops. Scotts Bluff doesn't really wanna be involved, they wanna do their own thing on their grant. Um, and I'm also working with the city on their six-year road plan. Uh, 10th Street Corridor is on that, um, from the railroad tracks to Stable Club Road where possibly as they upgrade that, redo the curbs and gutters to put in pullouts for our bus stops to add some safety, some additional safety features so our buses aren't having, uh, to stop on 10th Street. And so, the city's been very, uh, open with that. I've been talking to Annie Foul, uh, Pat Heath on that and I think it's something we can make happen. We may have to come up with some, some funding or some grant money to help with that, but, uh, we're trying to get that ball rolling now.
Okay.
For long-term safety.
Very good, thank you, Kirk.
Any other questions, Jim? Thank you.
All right, any other staff? Okay. With that, we do have, uh, two executive sessions. I'm not sure we're, I, the one we're gonna, we can use your-
You can use our office.
For both of them?
You can use it for both.
Okay.
Does this need to be done with one motion or?
Yeah, I think we can. I think we can. I, that's, I was just wondering about that.
Is it all right with you then?
Well, that's what I was asking too. I, I don't, I didn't know if you needed to come back from one or not.
I, I think, I think we can do it with both. We'll, we'll do it and then apologize later or something.
I'm gonna move, we go into executive session. The first session for the purpose of personnel issue and that to include the board and Gene, Bauer and Mark Luce. And then, uh, the second portion of this executive session for a purpose of sheriff union contract negotiations to include the board, uh, the sheriff and, um, Troy Brown.
Hey, can I move first, Ruth Sorenson, can I get on the phone?
Right. And so-
Can you go to the room with Kelly?
Yes, there, we're here.
Kelly?
We're here.
Can they hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Um, if you're gonna have Mark in that executive session, I should be too, or Sarah Scott?
Yeah, we can certainly include, uh, uh, Ruth Sorenson and/or Sarah Scott via conference call.
I don't know how we're gonna do that in that room.
Okay, that'll work.
I would, can I, can I ask that we call them in, um?
Later, later on, yeah.
Everybody's as needed.
Yeah, cause there are some, some county personnel issues that I want to deal with prior, prior to including all of that. Uh, in, in fact, I would like to, if you would amend your motion that our personnel issue, if we could have just Gene and the board to start out and then we call Mark in later, if that's okay with you?
I think all of them, the, the entire motion would be that we bring those people in as needed.
As needed, thank you, I appreciate that. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, record your votes, please. Okay, so the first personnel, Gene, uh, Gene-
Am I okay to close?
Yes. Gene, just you and us for right now to start out.
You have four yeses.
We'll go in there, all right, thank you. And we can use your room for, for that, Mark.
I will get phone numbers for them for you while you're gone.
Yeah, that's gonna be the issue is, can we put them on a conference call with us if we know their number in there?
If we know their number, I'll get them.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Please stay on the line, Ruth.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna stop this and this.
Are you still here?
I sure am.
All right.
I just got the video started.
Okay, well, we're gonna just, we're just gonna resign.
And I'm coming over here to get this started. And it is-
It is?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in regular session at 6:30. Call the roll, please.
Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Okay?
All right.
No decision?
No decision, no action was taken, no other business, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right.